Items. Item number two. I will not be making a motion to vote to maintain Captain Harder as a layman superintendent as he had an interest in purchasing a field acquisition.
You just pull up the table.
Yes. Number three, which all made is number eight. I would not be making a motion to vote for approval for funding for a recall election for Mayor Tony Mute. Number nine. I would not be making a motion to vote to dismiss Alfonso Whitaker or Whitaker, whatever you see. Number, I'm not going to motion for something that is not according to ordinance of choice.
Yeah, you work on the agenda together.
We do, but y'all items that you have one here, you don't have the authority and I'm not going to make a motion to do so. Vote to appoint, you all don't have the authority to appoint another attorney.
Yes, you do.
You do not. Your lawyer? You do not. You don't have the authority to hire, fire employees, attorneys, city council, department heads.
According to you, you're working for us.
Yes.
Yeah, you're working for us.
You work for us. We do and y'all being misled by city councils.
You said it.
No, it's not. Point of order.
Can we leave it for the citizens to vote?
Public comment is adjourned.
Yeah, not at the end. City council is for us. That's what y'all are there for. Not the man they need for someone to mislead the entire city with this. Because y'all have.
Y'all have.
Do we want to adjourn this meeting?
Yeah.
Or do we want to add that?
The only item that I'm making a motion to add is number one.
It's not up to you to make the vote.
Yes, it is. I'm not making a motion to vote.
You're doing it for yourself.
I'm not doing it for myself. A new sticky. Okay.
So you want to?
Yeah.
Everybody else like, I haven't said anything no more yet because you the mayor.
You always.
No, she don't. No, she don't. She don't. Now I'm tired. Now I am tired. We don't believe that getting off. I am tired.
We may go home. As the parliamentarian.
Because you owe my God say something. You don't let. Keep him back down. No, no, but we have a meeting. We should have a meeting.
Y'all can have a meeting.
And you can leave and you want to be in there too.
The mayor from town has the right to take over the meeting. If y'all want to.
The meeting.
The mayor who want him. I have the right for going to the rules, Robert's Rules of Order, to adjourn this meeting. And this meeting is adjourned. This meeting is adjourned. Stay here and wait. I ain't gotta show you anything.
We work for the city. You have worked for us. We pay your salary.
I'm glad he's on his current ally.
This meeting is adjourned.
Go home. See ya.
When you know when that we should have a meeting?
We're elected officials and we have the rights.
I just adjourned this meeting. I'm late this.
How many questions? Harry, so this is supposed to be a fool about everything if we can't give you the message for the mayor, the attorney, or the council? Because all I've heard today is nothing but pickering and arguing between everybody here. How come the citizens cannot get the information they need so the city can actually be progressed? And make a vote instead of showing us. How come the citizens have to pay for it? Everything I have been to is home invented from cancers or dad got sent home early? Because nobody has the right to tell us that we need to listen to y'all when everything should go through the citizens and it should be a proper vote for everything.
Amen.
Let one reach the other.
I just want to ask you a question. I've been in the organization. I see when something come up to me to vote on something and it concern me, I cannot respond, I cannot sit down and someone else had to take my spot to do it. It's just like Mamuta got a recall on her. Everything that come down that come on her, she should step aside and let the protein hell on death because anything that come on her, she gonna disagree on it anyway.
Exactly.
The lawyer that asked for the map.
Where everybody else come?
I'm trying to say Mamuta still said, "Tony." Trying to say that now. Don't give me your respect. You gotta give me respect. See, when we speak, you wanna help. You don't wanna miss it.
Because you're talking out of turn. Don't holler.
Anyone see?
You in the mayor. Lawyer in the mayor.
Mr. Whitaker. Mr. Whitaker. I said the meeting is adjourned. I didn't say I want to.
So the meeting is adjourned. What about all the lists that's on that page? If the meeting is already adjourned, how are we gonna go through that list? What has to get voted on? And everything else? Are y'all gonna call another special election? Another special council? That's gonna get canceled? I have a sentence time of coming up here and seeing this deck of meat where he didn't get dismissed?
He walked out, but he ain't.
The mayor and the county attorney are intentionally derailing these meetings so that these actions cannot happen.
Did you or did you not? You have already said this meeting is adjourned. And here check out. So if the meeting is adjourned, how are we going to get through the document? You has to get go through.
Hey, it's okay. You have a chance. I know you are, you fine. You do that, you alright. You okay?
Meeting is adjourned, y'all.
Okay, but then watch.
You allow this man to talk to your citizen. That's not right for you. Allow me to talk to your citizen like this. That is not there. We are citizens of the people and you allow this man to talk to citizens like that. He doesn't know respect. He doesn't care about what's there. He's not from what's there. There's no time. He just want to money and pay. That's it. Now, the way he's talking to these citizens is not right. Right is right as long as wrong. Part of the world, he gonna sit and talk to rob up to the citizen like this.
Whitaker asked us from Google, the Robert's Rules of Order and the parliamentarian. It says, "Under Robert's Rules, the parliamentarian plays strictly advisory role in the conduct of meetings. Points of parliamentary inquiry can be addressed to the chair. The chair may consult with the parliamentarian whose advice is not binding on the chair. At the chair's discretion, the parliamentarian may be asked to explain a procedure or a rule to the body. The body may not request a ruling from the parliamentarian. If a member of the body disagrees with a decision made by the chair, that member can appeal the decision of the chair. When this occurs, the chair asks the body to vote on whether the ruling will stand." The key thing to remember is that the chair always makes the ruling and is checked by the body through the appeal process.
So read us the rule.
Read the rules.
That's your. This meeting is adjourned.
Big big head. The last meeting we had. The last meeting we had. Items were added to the agenda and you, sir, said that it's quite positive and quite appropriate for the council to come to the meeting and add to the agenda. And he said, "Sure, the mayor would allow that." So it looks concerning to me that this meeting, when you want to add to the agenda, we don't add to it. But it was done last time, you said at any time, the mayor would add this to the agenda and it would be discussed. Sir?
The question is whether there is authority.
He said don't want to defy. That's how that is.
You ain't gonna run to your way.
We been adjourned. We didn't know me no more. It's been adjourned. So ain't no city in that. We is without notice. Surely, anyone in this building having misled out. You too mad at Eric.
Why don't you go ahead and fire him because he's wrong? Fire him, he's wrong. You got some authority to do that, go ahead and fire him.
You sure to do that.
No, because he works, he works on Roman.
You don't have the authority to do that.
No way. Go to home with their shit, hold up. That's where we at. Close it up. Fire everybody. Nobody need to talk. You getting that done?
And at this point, there's no reason to have a council because everything we do and everything we vote on, mayor and the city attorney either don't follow through with it.
Come on, get your chart. That's ain't that count. Get your chart and you got to worry about. You have to get your chart. We'll get back on track.
Your attorney.
They said, "That's why if we bring them, they know what don't happen."
You can let them have their meeting. Of no effect. It's gonna be of no effect. That's right.
Hundred thousand dollars for this reelection write down.
You love the mayor of the city here and here that actually serves now as a municipal attorney. He can tell us the Robert's Rules of Order for this.
And look at the agenda. What does it say? By the mayor at the end of.
I, no, I asked.
What does it say?
I asked the lawyer. I've asked the lawyer. Mr. Tom can do that. Mr. Tom, who is a lawyer. You okay? I'm fine. It's just crazy.
Everybody ready, y'all?
Let that answer. We can ask the lawyer here if the answer.
You tell me, Lyton.
Can we just ask the lawyer here? He is a lawyer. Not the reason. He's not.
You're the lawyer, ma'am.
That's correct.
I am a former city attorney.
There you go.
For the city of Woodbury. Alright. And it does my heart, grave injustice to see that the city is where it is.
Amen.
It does.
I wish, I wish, I wish that we have this kind of enthusiasm in government on things that aren't important as they are of importance. He has called the meeting adjourned. The mayor has gavelled it out. At this point, we're not really governed by any rules. What I see is, is that the council would like to have a vote on issues. And they're not being allowed to be heard.
Exactly.
This is a, this is a mayor and city council. The mayor doesn't like what she may hear, that's not, you sign up for the good and the bad. The council should have the right to vote, to put things on an agenda, the right to be heard. And if the motion carries through the quorum, then the motion carries. You don't have to like it, you don't have to agree with it, but that's how government works. It shouldn't be personal because everybody in this room wants the better for the city of Woodbury. I'm not looking to be your city attorney. I am a judge. I am prohibited from serving in that role. So I'm not here looking for a job. I'm here to try to see that you all find your own way back because I have serious reservations about your charter. And that that charter could be subject to revoke.
Revoke it.
You've got to get back, you've got to get back to the business of government. You've got to be transparent. You've got to put things out so people can see them. You've got to have budgets. Those are the things that I think people are missing. Open record requests, even open records requests that we have requested, we get the standard, we'll notify you and we've received your request, we'll notify you in next number of days, and we don't get anything. Building permits, okay? Building and growth is a key to a good city. It's taken currently now anywhere from sixty to one hundred and eighty days to get a building permit. That's too long. Do you think people, do you think people who want to move here?
I'm agreeing with you. Sixty to twenty days can wear.
Ma'am, that's what.
Are you talking about city of Woodbury?
Two builders have told me that to get building permits are running anywhere from sixty to.
That's not true. That's just a comment.
Ma'am, I understand. I understand.
Well, I'm just gonna want to correct you.
Wrong means we're missing. But at that, at this point, what I'm gonna ask is, when are you gonna hire somebody that's gonna put out water bills?
Well, actually, the water bills have been worked on by the representative. I'm not an expert on the water utility building. We have, we have the representative who created the software. They have been working on the water bill since day one. We were not able to start after getting to the software at the beginning. Then we finally got into the software. Then there was errors. I'm not the one working on this because I'm not an expert. So these experts actually have been sending the water department out because they've been getting water meeting billing mixed up, something or other in the last two, three months. There's been different errors with that. So it's not me that's the holdup on the water. It's not what you were, but you don't tell me when I can talk. He was funny and I was funny to him.
Have you all read the GMA handbook for mayor and city council?
I have and I've been to, I've been to several classes with GMA.
I'm not asking about classes. The handbook says.
And actually, these council members have had no additional training. I have gone to multiple training sessions to try to learn what the mayor and all that's supposed to do.
The budget is your responsibility.
It is.
When was the last time you put a budget together for the city to review and have public commentary?
In order for me to review the budget, the clerk had to provide the information for me to review the budget. The clerk, it falls on me, however.
You can delegate authority, but you cannot disclaim responsibility.
I'm not disclaiming responsibility at all.
Where's the budget? That's state law.
Okay. Ask the council members.
That requires you as the mayor.
Ask the council members when I found a clerk who was able to come in, which was only just two months ago, to come in because I've been performing the duties of the clerk since that four. Ask them, "Why did they?" Was it the only one that was actually moreover the closest to a city clerk? Why didn't they go ahead and appoint that person? He could have been on a temporary basis or whatever. Go ahead and appoint that person.
I think the council, at the end of the day, ma'am, and I'll be quiet. The council should have the right to vote. They should have the right to be heard. They should have the right to have items changed on the agenda. We do that all the time in city and county government. If they want to change something, you may not like it, but let them be heard on it. Let it go up for a vote. At that point, if you feel that it's illegal, then legal counsel can take action. That's what you're paying them two hundred dollars an hour for. Okay? I've been in that position. Okay? He serves in an advisory role. He doesn't run the meeting. That's your job, ma'am. And then, and the other thing that really concerns me, having been, you know, I'm here and I look at this and I'm like, there's, everybody's being quiet. You've got two police officers and what concerns me is you have an officer here with a firearm who could not defend that firearm if she had to. And that tells me she's injured. She's on crutches, okay? I've been a cop for thirty-five years, okay? I would never, ever, ever put a law enforcement officer in a public role with a firearm where she doesn't have the ability to defend it. And this just tells me that what, at this point, right now, she can argue with me and everything like that. I'm a retired federal agent and I would never put someone with a gun and a badge on crutches in a place where she could be assaulted. That is sad, ma'am. And that tells me where the city is.
Actually. Now you see that you should have did something. He probably bang on y'all. Yeah, let's not escalate. They right though. They right though, whip it, whip it tail.
Now I'm gonna speak, I'm not a citizen of Woodbury. I'm not even a citizen of Meriwether County.
This is Mayor Whitaker.
Yes, but I don't live in Meriwether County, is what I'm saying. I work for the press and I have been covering governmental meetings for almost fifty years. I have never seen anything like I see in these meetings for the last year or so. I'm not gonna point a finger and say blame. I'm just gonna say, you guys are making my job so incredibly difficult.
Have a drink, little man.
Thank you, brother. But there. Honestly, that was all I had to say. I have never seen anything like this in fifty years of covering meetings. And that's absolutely awesome. I've got a lot more I could say, but at this point, I put my job in jeopardy, so I'm not gonna do it. And I had to make sure we were not in session. Because otherwise, I would lose my job.
First off, this is a total disappointment. We are the laughing stock of Georgia. I am here on the agenda to have property rezoned. Because this meeting was adjourned, I am now gonna be thirty more days behind on moving my business. I'm giving you notice now. I have followed all the proper channels. I am moving my business and I expect no repercussions.
Your turn, Tony. I ain't got waiting on me, baby. Waiting on you. I don't have a problem. I said what I got. I'm used to getting put out. Baby, I'm so used to getting put out, I laugh at you. Want me to get up and go first? Baby, you can't lock me, you never put me down. I want you down. You ain't, I'm one of them, baby. That's what I've been waiting on. Put him on me. Put him on me. Don't make, oh shoot, you make your man go full through. Put it on me. Cause I'm talking, I ain't doing nothing wrong. Tell me do that go. Do that go. I've been waiting.
Is the meeting adjourned?
It been adjourned.
Yeah, it been adjourned. It been adjourned to meet. Where she at?
Thank you. I appreciate you coming up here. And I do think you can defend yourself.
Thank you.
The whole city was against. Given up.
Everything I've been to and especially with this is a joke. And it's a sad joke because we're going further and further behind. There's no progression. I mean, when are we gonna have a meeting? I make production with it. Everyone set a code.
When is everything gonna get through a vote? Like anything?
I used to work in here up until seven, eight o'clock in the house.
You wouldn't do it.
Y'all be talking. Everybody get it. Y'all have a party, you want to. I'm gonna break my knee. You didn't have one set of stuff that everybody talking. I'm trying to figure out, you better have one set of stuff they had, everybody talking. I ain't heard you saying that I'm gonna fuck nobody but Karen. But you still want to put something on me? But you still want to put something on me? They special man.
I'm Rodger Gare. I think most people here know me. I've been here all my life. And I'm standing up there speaking as a former mayor of city of Woodbury for eight years and councillor for four years. I can tell you that the parliamentarian is not an elective official. He can't adjourn a meeting.
Exactly.
And you can't adjourn a meeting without a motion. And the mayor can't do that.
Exactly.
Back then, somebody told you.
Well, maybe that, actually, I can, being that they're disorderly, continue with the rule.
Spotlight and ethics code and a conflict of interest for her to be able to add or take off things out of the agenda that the council wants to add. And at this point, because it's about her.
What I said was, I'm not wanting to make a motion. I don't even make a motion, and I'm not trying to make a motion.
Okay, okay, and you don't make a motion?
Thank you, council. I wanted to get involved in a discussion like you just talked about in this forum. I do have an opinion about that, but I don't want to discuss that in this forum. The council need, you need to make a motion, either adjourn, or move forward with the meeting. And the mayor can't make a motion. She can't vote. Unless that's a tie. And I'm really tired of seeing this city disrupt for a year, at least a year. Yes. And yeah, all my life, and I've never, ever seen a situation like this. And respectfully, mayor, I would suggest that you just step down and let the city of Woodberry get moving forward again. We got, water bills are not being paid. Now, when it comes time to add you up, City Woodberry is gonna be in some serious financial conditions concerning water bills because people aren't getting water bills, are not gonna pay it. They're not gonna pay anything you can't prove that they use.
The only issue with that is, I'm not the, I'm not the water expert.
That doesn't matter, but you, you keep talking about you are the executive officer. You need to do something about moving the city of Woodberry forward. And that means correcting this water bill problem that we got.
They're working on that.
The city also doesn't have a budget. Now, I got a tax bill last year for, a tax bill, and the city didn't have a budget. How did you know how much tax to charge, mayor? Without a budget? And what, never, never talked to the ministry?
Yeah, I was one of them.
Nevertheless, you don't have a budget, so I don't know how do you know how much money to charge taxpayers? If you don't have a budget, how do you know how much money revenue needs to be coming in?
Well, the, the, the ministry was passed down from the county. When they passed down from the county, they reduced the ministry rate. So I, in turn, reduced that to reflect what the county reduced as far as what we were paying.
So do we know that that's gonna be enough revenue?
Well, the problem with that is, we need additional revenue and I asked council to increase slightly some fees so that we could.
That's what our meeting was supposed to have been about.
Why? Why don't you have a city tax? If you do point five percent, that's still five cent on a dollar. How much money?
What do you mean city tax, you just lost your, what'd you say?
Why not add one?
He has no authority to.
If this meeting is not adjourned, why don't you move forward with the business of the city?
That's right, it's not a GM.
Yeah, we come here for the garbage bill and internet.
I'm not going to add on items that I have terminated.
Another thing, mayor. If you read the city code, you will see that a city clerk cannot be appointed without the consent and approval of the full council.
Well, actually, it does state that you can, in the absence of a vacancy. It gets around.
Not the city clerk. Not the city clerk. You can appoint a department water department head or street department head
Yes, sir.
without authority by the council, but you cannot appoint a city clerk.
Yes, in the, in the absence of a vacancy, if there's no vacancy, if there's a vacancy within the city.
Show it.
Still gotta have consent and approval.
I do not, that's, that's if they're, that's if I'm going to appoint. No, I'm sorry, that's if I'm appointing her and then they.
Water is hiding.
If you have some vacancy, I can't appoint insurance.
If you're up here at night, eight, nine o'clock, like, say you also, you need to spend that.
I'm not up here at night, actually, not, not.
You need to spend that time reading orders.
The meeting cannot go forward now.
Well, I made, I made the motion to continue the meeting, she said, all their favors.
Tell y'all to stay in a minute.
Yes, we would like to approve the agenda for July twenty-four, twenty twenty-three with the additions to act number six, to approve July eleventh, twenty twenty-three special call meeting minutes. Number seven, vote to maintain Kathy Harden as the election superintendent of the City of Woodberry for the remainder of the twenty twenty-three election cycle. Number eight, vote to approve funding for a recall election of Mayor Whitaker. Number nine, vote to dismiss both Mr. Afonso Whitaker individually and Mr. Whitaker and Whitaker PC collectively as city attorney for the City of Woodberry. Number ten, vote to appoint Smith, Welch, Will, and White attorneys at law as special counsel to represent the City of Woodberry affairs until the new city attorney is appointed and approved at the rate of two hundred dollars an hour for attorney time or one hundred dollars an hour for secretary of affairs time.
I get a motion to approve the amended agenda for July twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
I second the motion.
April twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, we don't have, we don't have, number three, four, five.
Number six, approval of July eleventh, twenty twenty, uh, twenty, twenty-three special call meeting. Can I get a motion?
I make the motion to approve the special call meeting minutes for July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Number seven, vote to maintain Kathy Harden as the election superintendent of the City of Woodberry for the remainder of two thousand, twenty-three election cycle. Can I get a motion approved?
I make the motion that we maintain Kathy Harden as the election superintendent for the City of Woodberry for the remainder of the twenty twenty-three election cycle.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Vote to approve funding for a recall election, for Mayor Tony Wood. Can I get a motion? Can I get a motion?
I make the motion to vote to recall, to approve funding for recall election for Mayor Tony Wood.
Second? Can I get a second?
Second.
Yeah, I see second? Everybody in favor? Number nine, vote to dismiss both Mr. Afonso Whitaker individually and Whitaker and Whitaker PC collectively as city attorney for the City of Woodberry.
I make the motion to vote to dismiss both Mr. Afonso Whitaker individually and Whitaker and Whitaker PC collectively as the city attorney for the City of Woodberry.
Can I get a motion approved?
I second the motion.
Second. All in favor? Number ten, vote to appoint Smith, Welch, and Will, the white attorney at law, as special counsel to represent the City of Woodberry affairs until the new city attorney is appointed. At the rate of two hundred dollars an hour for attorney time or one hour, two hundred dollars an hour for secretary of affairs time. Can I get a motion approved?
I make the motion to approve Smith, Welch, Will, and White at all, as special counsel and records, the City of Woodberry affairs, the City of Woodberry. I'm tired of it, appointed and approved.
Can I get a second?
I second.
All in favor? Number eleven, vote to approve rezoning application for owner Steven Brad Edmondson, Alan Don J. Question two, rezoned from residence to R three to commercial C three, property address five oh five Flat Shore Road, Woodberry, Georgia, three zero two nine three, parcel one seven five zero one two point two one five, A R S, property legal description, A T S E two fifteen, A C L, C eight, sixty-nine, ninth, L D. Located here in July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three at four P M. Location, Woodberry, Georgia, address four, hall complex, eighteen zero five three Main Street, Woodberry, Georgia, three zero two nine three. Plan is only approved if located for rezoning at the original registered schedule meeting on July sixth, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Y'all get a motion for the rezoning of Mr. Brad?
I make the motion that we, um, approve, I make the motion that we vote to approve the rezoning application for Mr. Brad Edmondson and Alan, um, Don J for the rezoning.
Can I get a second?
Second.
You have a second, you have a seat? All in favor? Scott, uh, Martin Zook was appointed and internal city clerk from Mayor Tony Wood on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three due to breaking up the city clerk position. And up to office, well administered on July twelfth, twenty twenty-three at twelve, twenty-two P M. As she was sworn in before, I think, they're gonna do this, she will be sworn in again today, possibly. Any discussion?
There is, um, discussion regarding whether or not the attorney had, I mean, the mayor had the right to do that. So. Exactly, the council didn't approve, approve that appointment.
I'm trying to discuss indeed, if, uh, if the lady's body, the donor city of Woodberry recollection committed. Anyway, interested, please don't take it all.
Bobby, you can table all that, because until she's out, they can't, nobody can do nothing.
I'm not going anywhere.
This rec. committee, is that what you're from, the rec. center for the kids, or is that the event committee that we used to have?
For the kids.
So to help, like, volunteer at the rec. center for the kids?
Yes. No, no, it's just, they wanted to get something together for the kids and the tennis court, maybe the basketball court, something for the kids.
And so, you need somebody to help with that? Because we, I couldn't get somebody to group, but I would certainly be a volunteer if it has to do with the kids. My name is Sunny. Sunny, Sunny gets Tyrell. Basketball, they'll tend to Tyrell, like, T Y R R B L N. Basketball court is right across the street from our house, from our house. And Sunny's built, S O E, I E, S O E, E Y.